I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to call a St. Clair County Regular Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd make a motion to elect Dave Rushing for Board of Chairman.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Heidman?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Smasko?
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson.
All right, moving on to number three. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Can I have a motion?
I would move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, item number four. Can we have approval of the agenda?
I would so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. So, minutes from the previous meeting. I will move to support that the minutes from the June 19, 2012 Commission meeting, the August 2, 2012 Standing Committee meetings, and the August 9, 12 Quarterly Budget Workshop be approved and filed?
Are you making that motion?
Yes. May I support?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to six. Do we have any propretations tonight? Okay. Number seven. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items 7A through 7G on the consent agenda.
We have support? Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, moving on to number eight. Reports of standing and special committees.
I have a couple, Mr. Chairman. Okay, last evening I attended the City Council in Marysville and was quite pleased with the outcome. What they did was because of the footprint that we changed last week on the size of the Convention Center and the additions that we made, part of that property was along to the city, so they had to convey part of that to the county. And after a brief discussion, they passed it five to one, and so it's set to go, and so I was pretty excited, pretty proud of that. And all the council members that were there thanked Howard and I. Howard was in attendance as well, and so I just not report that to you guys. One other thing, this is just a brief thing, but I also attended the Health Department meeting this morning, and I just wanted to report one thing from Lansing, that the Health Department Director, Olga Dazzle, who was appointed by Governor Snyder, is stepping down, and I don't know whether there's a health reason or other reasons, but she stepped down. And so the governor is appointing Jim Havermon Jr., and he was director back in the '90s, and he was also mental health director for five years, and so he will stand appointment as soon as the consent of the Senate happens. So I just want to report that we have new director for Health Department. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
No report.
Okay.
No report.
No report. Great. Then we'll move on to number nine. Citizens wishing to address the board. Did we have a [inaudible]?
No. Can I just informally? I just do a brief update on the bioreactor.
I know you're very versed on this, if you would, though. Or Howard, if you want to give him an update on the bioreactor?
I guess you guys were going for best practice, the last meeting I've been to, so...
I can fill you on that specifically, and any other questions you may have. I'm sure others can jump in as well. We continue working with the DEQ and the EPA to try and get them to recognize what we're doing is a best practice rather than just a research project. We've been informed by the EPA, who actually, as a result of several of the commissioners visiting their offices in Washington, flew out here, took a look at the facility. Subsequent to that, Senator Levin has come out and visited the facility along with his staff, and they have informed us that the EPA will begin the work that's necessary, the administrative work, to make those changes to the rules that would hopefully recognize it as a best practice, but not until 2014. So we still have a ways to go before that happens. So we're hoping that through the assistance of our legislators, we'll be able to put some pressure on the EPA and perhaps get them to move a little bit quicker.
Now, does that, do you have to have the best practice? I know there's the waste. Is it the waste that comes from the bioreactor?
No. What they're considering as unique about this is two things. One, that there is liquid being injected into the landfill, other than the liquid that may be there from the leachate. So we're injecting something different into the landfill. And secondly, that what we're injecting is septicage. So that's their concern, that's what they're testing, along with whether or not a double-liner system is something that would be acceptable. That particular issue, the state of Michigan has already taken up, and they've agreed that a single-liner is all that's necessary to run a bioreactor. So that change has already been made. But the bigger issue is whether or not the entire system can be permitted without having to get a special research permit from the EPA. Answer all your questions.
And of course, we're very excited. We want that to happen, because when the septicage is added, it causes the garbage to rot faster and produces the gas, the ethylene gas, at a quicker rate, and so giving us more generation capacity. So we're very excited about that ruling.
And you can get the exact figures, but the leachate, I mean, we're paying about six cents a gallon, we're down to two cents a gallon now, because we have our own system now to handle that. Howard's got to play a minute.
Well, just a couple of points. So not only are we recognizing a savings, because we no longer have to haul the leachate away, and so we cut the cost there by about a third, and when you have a million-dollar contract to haul that liquid away, that's a huge savings for the county. And then superimposed on the top of that, any revenue derived from the sale of landfill gas to DT Energy, we get that revenue too. So it's a nice turnaround in the operation of the landfill.
I think that was probably the last meeting that I was at, that you were discussing the hauling of the leachate.
Leachate.
Okay.
Do you have any, you also need to answer? The other citizens wishing to address the board. Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? All right, we'll move on to new business. And the first one will be the introduction of the Township officials, which I will do. We do have Linda Waddy has been the Township Clerk here for Riley for many years now, and our Treasurer, Nancy Dudek. And I also live in Riley Township. I don't know if you have anything you want to send to the board?
No, just thank you. Thank you for coming to Riley Township. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to eleven B. Approval of the county dispersments?
I'd like to move to approve county dispersments for the month of July 2012 with an amount of $10,000,449.16 and 10 cents.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
All right, we'll move on to eleven C.
I would like to move to approve the employment agreement between the St. Clair County Library Board and the St. Clair County Library Director for the term of 6/2712 through 6/2715.
I would support that motion. Any discussion? Okay. We need a roll call on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Allison, congratulations.
All right, move on to eleven D.
Chairman, at this time I would move that we approve the agreement for law enforcement services between the St. Clair County Sheriff and the City of Elgin Act for a term of 10/112 through 9/3015 in the amount of $1,388,498.
Support. Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Move on to eleven E. I'll move to approve the agreement for law enforcement services between the St. Clair County Sheriff and the Charter Township of East China for a term of 1/113 through 12/3115 in the amount of $434,692. Support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to eleven F.
This time I would move to approve the FY 2012 Edward Ryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $14,576 to be used for the purchase of equipment.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
All right, eleven G, please.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the sheriff's request to add one full-time road patrol deputy to their manning table.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko?
Yes.
All right, move on to eleven H.
I would like to move to approve this professional service agreement with strategic federal affairs for the term of 9/112 through 8/3114.
Support. Any discussion?
Yes, question. Bill, is that in the line item for legislation or for award? Where does that fall under that?
It would be under legislative.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry. Bill, we had, this piece carries a part of the grant writing, or is it all of the grant writing? Is it all incorporated into one piece now?
It's in one contract.
In one contract, yes.
Now, there is a performance review period for that additional service, and if we're not pleased with the service that they provide, then the contract amount can be reduced.
So right now, are we in a position where we can ask them to write grants for us, or start researching?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a two-year, right, Bill? The term? Bill?
Yes, it is for a two-year term. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Apologize for being late. Just came in from [inaudible]. You were easy.
Moving on to eleven, aye? Did we vote on?
We have a vote.
Okay. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Eleven, aye.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 12-25, adopting the 8020 Cost Sharing Model Public Act 152 of 2011.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Eleven J.
Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the sheriff's request to add a sergeant position and eliminate the deputy position.
Have support? Any discussion? Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to the administrative board.
Couple of things I'd like to share with you this evening. One is a reminder that next week you have a workshop scheduled for the 23rd at 5:30 in Port Huron. We're going to be covering three issues, two of them fairly quickly and hopefully within a half hour, and that is Medicare Advantage Program. Lacrosse Blushild will be here, as well as some of the Human Resources staff, to talk a little bit about that. Also, the Affordable Health Care and the potential impact that we suspect that will be having on the county. We've been meeting with the healthcare consultants that the county uses to talk a little bit about the Affordable Health Care and what we need to do to prepare for it as we look towards the 2013 budget. And we've got some information that is very important that we share with you. I'm trying to see. Did you say the 25th? No, the 23rd, next Thursday. Yes. Sammy?
Bill, is that 5:00 or 5:30?
It's at 5:30. So we'll talk a little bit, the consultants will share a little bit of information about the Affordable Health Care. We won't go into a lot of detail, because there's still a lot of information that's being trickling out of DC relative to that. The majority of the evening, though, we'll be talking about the landfill and also about the bioreactor project. You may recall that a little over a year ago, we engaged the services of two consultants to assist us with addressing some operational issues out there, to help us renegotiate some contracts and hopefully reduce some of the operating costs at the landfill. What they'll be doing is reporting back their results and what they've been able to accomplish over the last year, some of the cost savings that we've been able to realize. They're also going to be spending some time talking about what some of the future needs of the landfill may be as we look towards expanding the bioreactor, or at least certainly adjusting towards, to the need of additional cell space in 2015. So we'll be talking about that. We'll also spend some time talking about the finances out at the landfill, to share with you where we are financially, how things have changed over the last couple of years, and why we think they have changed, and do some financial forecasting as well with you. So we'll spend a lot of time talking about the landfill, but I think you'll be pleased with the information that the consultants will be able to share with you. Earlier, I just passed out to you some information that came from the EDA. They had a meeting earlier this week.
We'll go back to the landfill stuff for a second, Bill. I didn't know any of the rest of the commissioners saw the email from our lobbyists, but with the research and development piece, that it is in the EPA's hands now that they're working on getting that changed into a best practice scenario. So it's still going forward, and it's really a piece of the puzzle that we need to get done. Lisa and our lobbyists have continued to stay on top of it. It's been great.
Bill, or Jeff, I have a question on the landfill. Last year, we dove into the possibility of a separate board, that we would be appointing a board to run the landfill, and that sort of just dropped off the edge here. Where are we with that? Are we still going to continue to, well, continue to run it as the county Board of Commissioners? But I mean, is that kind of gone away, separate board of directors, or?
I think if I recall correctly, what we were looking at is a potential, let's say, revenue generating side of ALT, what was called Alternative Landfill Technologies. And that was a joint partnership with the private sector to really push the new technology that we had developed. At that time, we were hoping that we'd get much quicker action out of the EPA and the DNR to allow for this technology to move into other landfills. And as we have discussed tonight, it's going to take quite a bit longer, a few more years. So at this point, I'm not sure that it's timely to establish that private, public-private board that would oversee ALT. And I think we'll talk a little bit next week about what it would cost to move that technology forward, to market that effort through that Board of Directors, and whether or not we've got the funding to support that. So we can talk a little bit about that next week.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, that group would not run the landfill. They would just market the patent that we have on the septic bioreactor.
Correct.
The key piece is getting that, the thing that I talked about, getting that changed, and that's what we're having.
Bill, maybe we solicit membership on that already? Can we talk to some people?
We had, and we do have interest from three or four individuals, and we have informed them that things are quiet, we're not really moving forward. One of them actually has come back to assist us with part of the project, really evaluating whether or not now is the time to move forward. So one of those members has remained active, just in their advisory role.
This underlooking effort, some period of time?
So earlier this week, the EDA held their quarterly meeting, shared some information, activities that they're up to. There's really two things that I just want to share with you right now. One is that they are beginning the process of partnering with Michigan State University to take a look at St. Clair County as a primary location for an intermodal facility that would be located, we're hoping, somewhere along a rail line, that would capitalize on the agricultural products that come out of the thumb area, and hopefully have some kind of ag processing activity associated with it. So they'll be working with Michigan State University, and as we learn more information, we will be sharing that with you. The other thing is they've just kicked off on the new Small Business Development Program. I just passed out some brochures for all of you, and I'll leave a few here on the table. It explains a little bit about the services that the EDA will be providing to try and help small businesses within the county. And again, this is something that is relatively new for the EDA and really creating a stronger role in assisting the small business. Earlier today, the Director of the Airport and I met with MDOT and FAA officials in Lansing. You may recall that MDOT Aeronautics was over to visit our airport about six weeks ago, and we explained to them some of the things that we would like to accomplish at the airport, some of the investments that the county has made on its own, as well as review some of those investments that we've made in partnership with MDOT. Also to cover some challenges that we have, and we really laid out a plan of action that we were hoping they would assist us with. Couple of weeks ago, they called us, asked us to come out to Lansing and meet with them and the FAA and try and resolve two of the probably stickier problems that we've had out at the landfill, or pardon me, out at the airport. We had a very productive meeting. Some of the advice that we've been receiving over the last couple of years from some of the MDOT staff turns out isn't necessarily correct. The FAA jumped in and corrected them and advised us to know some of the things we've been struggling with. It's a lot easier to address than we originally thought, so.
Give them, for instance, if you could.
Oh, for instance, one of the issues that we have out at the airport is some of the lots in the Air Industrial Park are located in areas that are supposed to be reserved only for those uses that need to access taxiways in the airport itself. They have an aviation function or purpose. They may take deliveries or ship things out through the use of the airport. Over the years, over the last probably 25 or 30 years, some of those lots have been leased out to non-aviation activities, or maybe they were originally an aviation activity, and as their business changed, they don't use the airport any longer. We were being advised that we had to move some of those businesses out of those lots, out to a different area. You can imagine the concern the businesses had about moving out there. If we didn't do so, they were requiring us, or at least we were under the impression that we'd have to pay some very hefty fines and pay back some of the grant money that we received over the years, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. That was a big issue for us. Well, what we learned today was, in that particular problem, all it takes is a new lease agreement with those property owners. There's some specific language that needs to be included, and then we need to get the FAA to sign off on those leases, and then those folks can remain in those buildings. So it certainly makes it easier for the businesses that are there, and many of those businesses that would like to expand. And in fact, one of the things I want to report to you is that, is that as a result of today's meeting, we'll be able to meet with two property owners out at the airport that would like to purchase lots from us and expand their existing operations. Until this morning, we were unable to tell them that they could do so. So they'll be expanding their operations, they're great businesses, and it'll be nice to see some investment out at the Air Industrial Park. I'd also like to report, just aside from the meeting that we had this morning, is there's been a lot more activity out at the airport this summer. We've got two aircraft that have been moved from Canada, and they're now stationed at our airport, two that have moved up from Detroit City Airport, all of this since the spring. Also, the jet activity has really expanded out at the airport, so much so that we'll see a little bit more revenue in the gas fees that we receive from Mr. Orzell and their operation. So we've had a lot going on. If you're interested, I can send you a list of the businesses that have been using the airport much more heavily this summer. I think that speaks well to some of the investments we've made, as well as obviously a change in the local economy. Remind, just a reminder that we do have a legislative lunch coming up next Monday. It will be held out at the Columbus County Park. It's at noon on the 2nd. If you haven't already responded to let us know that you will be there, please let me know today or early tomorrow morning, and we'll make sure that we order the appropriate number of lunches. An agenda has gone out, I believe you received it yesterday or the day before, and SRF, again our lobbyists, assist us in putting that agenda together, as well as input that we get from department heads.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
If I could just go back for a moment to the airport, there's a couple other projects that maybe you could update us if you know, and that would be the state police temporary post that was put together, and also the fire, the fire protection with Kimball and Marysville. How is that all coming together?
Well, the state police are in. They're very happy. In fact- In fact, yesterday, they had their bomb dog in the area, and they were looking for a site to do some training. And our airport director was able to assist them in finding some facilities on the airport grounds that they spent the entire day training with their dog. We do have an issue that we're addressing with some additional locker room space that we'll have to provide. And the building and ground superintendent has been working with the state police, as well as with the airport staff in ensuring that we've got the space, scheduling that change to the building as well. So that particular relationship has been working out very, very well for us. The talks with the Kimball Fire Department, those continue. There really hasn't been a lot of advance, advancement in those discussions. I think folks are just looking at budgets and looking at demands before they make that kind of a decision.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. We'll move on to miscellaneous business. Do you have any miscellaneous business? 你們的文件
At this time, I would move to proceed with the file packs.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. They have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.